Good evening and welcome to our 2019 annual town meeting. I'm Scott McTominay, the town moderator, and I'm once again honored to be here tonight to preside over Medfield's annual town meeting. Thank you for being here and participating as a member in Medfield's legislative body. Tonight, we will be making laws and we will be determining budgets. You will be engaged in one of the finest examples of direct democratic self-government to be found anywhere in the world, or in fact, down through history. So thanks for being here. Our amazing heritage in this town is that they've been holding these town meetings as a form of democratic self-government extending all the way back to 1651, which is going to be 370 years coming up. So thank you for being here tonight to undertake the important and the hard work of building a great community. I'm advised by our town clerk, we do have a quorum, so thank you very much. Our new starting time of seven o'clock? No? Okay. And tonight, we have 32 articles to address as the legislative body of the town of Medfield. Just as I said about how pleased I was to have all of you with us here tonight, we are of course saddened on this evening to be without one of us, Michael Sullivan, after 44 years of being here on this stage and bringing his intelligence and his wit and his insight and his experience. And as I look out here tonight, and I look to my left and to my right, I appreciate that I am surrounded by many, many of the people that admire Michael and appreciated Michael and love Michael. And with that spirit of admiration and appreciation and love in mind, I'm going to offer a two-minute video tribute to Mike that was prepared by Medfield TV.
It's always a pleasure to come down here and find, I can find out what's going on in the town from your sources at the blue moon. Somebody said, "You've been there 44 years?" I said, "Yeah, that just means I'm old." And that's the other line I use now. People say, "Do you mind getting old?" I say, "I'm not getting old."
I'm already there.
I'm old.
I'm older, older.
Yeah, I'm old, yes. I think some of the things I really am proud of is all the land that we're able to acquire, keep, you know, keep Medfield sort of rural in character. I have the annual doom and gloom speech there on the table down there. If anybody didn't get one, you might want to pass it.
You have the doom and gloom handout to go with the doom and gloom speech.
Right. They tell me it's also an annual eye examination, just the print is so small. You know, as someone said to me recently, everyone was complaining that we had empty buildings in Medfield Center, and now that the buildings have filled up, everyone's complaining we have traffic and parking problems. Before I start, since this is my last doom and gloom speech, I'd like to particularly thank the financial management team. We're just sitting here yakking it up about the happenings of Medfield. It seems like there's nothing to it. We don't even need a script. All we have to, all we have to do is remember when to shut up and we've run out of time.
Thank you very much. Tonight's meeting is dedicated to the memory and service of Michael Sullivan. I will now ask the town clerk to read the return of service of our warrant.
By virtue of this law, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Medfield qualified to vote in elections and at town meetings by posting and testing copies of the same at five couple places, seven days before the date of the town meeting as ordered. Constable Paul Friuliaro, April 3, 2018.
Thank you, Carol. I wanted to invite all our veterans and attendants, if they would please stand so that we can acknowledge their service. Now, I'd ask everybody, if you would, to please stand. First, we do the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll be led in our National Anthem, and then we'll have a moment of silence. And I would ask our veterans, the leaders, if they would, in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. The treat, we will be led in our singing of the National Anthem by three students from Eva Kendrick's Voice Studio. Say hello to Emily and Marie and Emily.
Oh, say, can you see, can you see, by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail, at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose rough stripes and bright stars were too bright, through the perilous spights? Or the bright lights we watched, were so gallantly streaming? And the look as rare, the warmth who sang in air, kept proof through the night, that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, for the land of the free and the
Thank you. Thank you very much, all of us. Please remain standing, if you would. Okay, out of appreciation and respect, I do ask the town meeting to observe a brief moment of silence in memory of the following volunteers, employees, and contributors to the community of Medfield. In memory of William H. Mann, Special Police Officer, 1956 to 1959, police officer, 1959 to 1968, Acting Sergeant, 1968 to 1969, Police Chief, 1969 to 1989, and retired. For Michael J. Sullivan, Town Administrator for 44 years, who began his career in Medfield as Medfield's Executive Secretary. For Barbara Connors, who was on the Council of Aging from 1995 to 1998. For Joan Wilgus, who was on the Board of Health from 1989 to 1995. To Charles Fuller, to Charles Chuck Fuller, who was our Town Council from 1966 to 1991. To Alan Kingsbury, who was our Chief of Police in 1959 to 1967. To Mary Gillis, the Traffic Supervisor, from 1994 to 2009. To Catherine June Kelly, the wife of Bill and the mother of Tom Kelly and Nancy Laven Kelly, the family-operated Toys Department Store for many, many years. And then I was saddened to be informed that the School Department's Food Director, Don LaBalle, has just passed away. So in memory of all of those folks, if you don't mind, and for all of your friends and neighbors who have passed away in the months since our last annual town meeting, let's pause to remember with a moment of silence. Thank you ladies, fantastic job again tonight. Thank you very much. Okay, now with the introductions, I have the pleasure of introducing to Mike immediately, our Town Clerk Carol Leah. And then I would ask Mike Marcucci, Gus, I would ask Gus, if you would, as Chairperson of the Board of Selectmen, to introduce the executive branch of our government.
All the way over to my left is Carol Leah, our Town Clerk. And next to her is Evelyn Clark, Assistant Administrator to the Board of Selectmen. Next to me, to my left, is Christine Truyliler, who's the Town Administrator. I'm Gus. And to my right is Keith Peterson, Selectman. And Mike Marcucci, after that, also Selectman. And all the way down on the right is Mark Sorrell, our Town Council.
And to my left, I have now to introduce Mike Pastore, who's the Chairperson of the Warrant Committee. And I'd ask Michael, if you would, to introduce the members of the Warrant Committee.
Thank you, town moderator. To my left is Sharon Tejko, Newton Thompson, Christine Larder, Amanda Hall, Chairman Marsette, and Bob Slime.
And because I always do my thank yous at the end, people are starting to scampering out, although I don't think it's going to be as bad tonight this year as well. I just want to thank the Warrant Committee for another great winter and spring of your deliberations and the time you contribute to making these recommendations. Much appreciated. So thank you. Okay, at this time, we make a motion to permit non-voting participants to sit within the town meeting and to speak to the town as requested. We reserve a special visitors section over to my left. For this purpose, I would ask Evelyn Clark, the Administrator's Secretary of the Board of Selectmen, to read the names of our invited visitors.
Jeffrey Hartson, Superintendent of Schools. Christine Truyliler, Town Administrator. William Calico, Fire Chief. Michelle Garret, Police Chief. Mark Sorrell, Town Council. Maurice Goulet, Director of Public Works. Joy Retrudo, Town Council. Yvonne Ramilar, Tax Assessor. Sarah Reposa, Town Planner. Gary Pelletier, Building Commissioner. Leslie Willetts, Conservation Agent. Roberta Lynch, Council Run Aging Director. Amy Collery, Facilities Director. John Cooken, Veterans Agent. Kevin Ryder, Parks and Recreation Director. Chelsea Goldstein Walsh, Youth Outreach Worker. Pam Gardner, Library Director. And we're happy to have Representative Sean Dewey with us this evening.
Let's stand up, I want to say hello to everybody. Thank you for being here. And a special welcome also as well to our new Chief of Police, Michelle Garret, who's here. Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Welcome to Medfield. A special and a heartfelt thank you to Acting Chief Will Hellman. We appreciate your service, your dedication, and your professionalism. Thank you very much. Okay, our meeting guidelines, Scott's Rules of Order, as some column are in pages one through three of our report on the warrant. I won't read them all, but I will identify a couple of them. The moderator will recognize the Warrant Committee for the purpose of making the main motion on each article. If they have a positive motion, I will be asking them to make a report. As each article of the warrant is presented, I remind everybody that the discussion and the vote is on the motion, not as the article is printed, but the motion that is on the floor is what we will be avoiding, is what we'll be voting on. To avoid any confusion, I only allow one motion to amend at a time on the floor, at any one time. Any voter wishing to speak to the town meeting should go to the nearest microphone, that would be microphone number one. And microphone number two, where I've been recognized, I ask that you address the town through the moderator, if you would. It will be our practice, as it usually is, to take voice votes. If the moderator is in doubt as to the outcome of a voice vote, I will ask for a show of hands. If I still am in doubt, a count by standing vote will be taken. Such count will be administered by the Deputy Moderator. Once the voting procedure is commenced, no further discussion will be allowed on the motion until the moderator declares the outcome of the vote, and we only do that one time. And I think that's all the rest of the guidelines we can address there on Articles One through Three. Tonight, in terms of the order of the proceedings, unlike last year, where we had a whole collect, you know, kind of a complex array of articles, we're going to go back to keeping it very straightforward tonight. We'll first do the consent calendar, and then we will do the two personnel issues, Article in Seven and Eight. They need to be taken up anyway before we recall the operating budget, so we do them right after we do the consent calendar. And then we'll do the zoning articles, which are Articles Twenty-Three, Twenty-Four, and Twenty-Five. And then all of the other articles will be subject to our traditional lottery. A report on the warrant for the annual town meeting, I just want to, it's a very handy guide, I refer you to Mike Pastore's prefatory remarks on Pages Five and Six. There's a review of town finances on Pages Seven through Twelve. The town of Medfield's tax levy information can be found on Page Thirteen. A budget overview on Page Fourteen. Pie charts for expenditures and revenues on Page Fifteen. Our reserve fund transfers on Page Sixty. And a historical debt is chronicle on Page Seventeen. And then, for many of you who would like to follow along on how we're doing, on Page Fifty-Nine, the Report of the Warrant, is a scorecard to keep track. We open with remarks, and I would ask Mike Pastore, Chairperson of the Warrant Committee, to make some prefatory remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, welcome to tonight's town meeting, and thank you sincerely for taking the time to fill this important town function. We have a lot to get through tonight, so I'm not going to sit here and talk to you when you can just read my remarks in the yellow book in front of you, but there are a few things I'd like to highlight this year. First and foremost is that, thanks to the hard work of many, we were able to meet our goal of presenting an accurate and balanced town, our balanced budget to town meeting, and avoiding the need for an operational override. But that being said, there are several challenges ahead, and just because we were able to present an override-free budget this year, doesn't mean we'll be able to do so next year. So please keep that in mind as we review the budget and vote on it in other monetary articles. For example, over the next few years, we're going to see warrant articles relating to the state hospital, the new Dale Street School, a new Parks and Rec facility, among other important operational infrastructure upgrades. Additionally, in order to balance this year's budget, it was necessary to postpone a number of capital leisure requests that cannot be ignored indefinitely. Consistent delays in capital and infrastructure improvements will not serve this town in the long run. That we've been able to avoid an operational override this fiscal year is really no small feat, and would not be possible without the stewardship of Christine Truyliler in her first year as Town Administrator, the diligent work of her financial team, and really the cooperation, collaboration, dedication, and sacrifice to our department heads. Special thanks is owed to Michael LaFrancesca, who provided significant expertise and support well beyond his job description. And additional thanks go to the members of the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, as well, who we worked closely with throughout the process. And each member of the Warrant Committee up here, your dedication, your skills, and just the positive attitude you brought to this process will never be forgotten, and I appreciate that. There's no shortage of important and expensive decisions to make as a town in the coming years, and the need to face those issues head-on, with a pragmatic, creative, and honest approach to ensure the town's fiscal health while keeping up the services that make this town as great as it is. So thank you for your help in those efforts, and I look forward to a productive discussion tonight.
Thank you, Michael. And Christine, give some opening remarks. And welcome.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank everyone for their kind words about Michael. You all know he would have hated this, even talking about him tonight, but it's very special for all of us and all of his department heads that work with him. I would echo Mike Pastore's comments, I can't thank everyone enough about the collaboration and transparency we had during this process. If you look through your warrant report, you'll see that we actually had Article Thirty-One for dismissing tonight, which laid out the process for another operational override this year. Once we put that article on the warrant, both the School Committee, all of us, the Board of Selectmen, the Warrant Committee started to work together with the department heads to make sure we didn't have to have Article Thirty-One. So thank you to all of them for making that happen. However, and honestly, I don't want to call this, I can't call it the doom and gloom because that was Michael, so if you have any suggestions, please send them to me this year. But it is a doom and gloom. I echo what Mike said, we're presenting you with a balanced budget tonight, but I think of it more as a non-override budget. There are still issues such as the capital budget, our use of free cash that gives me pause and make me nervous for what's coming. And the biggest thing we need to do is start to worry about where our additional revenue is going to come from. So our job over the next year for the Board of Selectmen is to start to investigate where that revenue will come from. We need to start asking some serious questions. How are we going to fund our capital budget? We were able to fund our Buildings Safety Relation Fund last year, we need to do something similar to our capital budget. We had over 2 million requests this year for capital budget, and we're not able to fund any of those that didn't come out of revolving funds. How are we going to increase, how are we going to address the increasing costs of healthcare and benefits for our employees? Not hiring new employees is not the answer, so that's something we'll be looking at over the next year. We also need to determine, are we providing the services in the most possibly effective manner to do as taxpayers? And that's something the Board of Selectmen have made as one of my goals to do, is to look at each department and determine, are we providing you the best possible service and at the best possible cost? So while we work to answer those questions over the next year, you're going to see some changes to the budget. You're going to see us talk about the budget more on a year-round cycle rather than December to April. We're starting to make changes to capital budget, and all of that is based on the void for consistent policies that they adopted back in July of 2018. We're also trying to make the budget easier for everybody to understand. I hope you'll see some of the initial changes we made in this year's warrant report. One making it bigger so you can see it. So if you have any suggestions or ideas of how we can make the budget easier for you to understand, please know that similar to Michael, I have an open door policy. Please stop in at any time. And I cannot thank my financial team, Georgia Levis, Yvonne Ramilar, and Joy Retrudo for all of their help in transitioning. For most of you that know, I didn't take over until January, and Mike retired at the end of January, so we picked up this budget process about the beginning of February. So I thank them for all of their thoughts and knowledge, and they knew what Mike was intending to do when he left me and all of his worksheets, so thank you to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine. Okay, this is my one commercial, so I want to thank MFI for providing us with our Just Water tonight. Obviously, the MFI Legacy Fund is always looking for support, and they have a particular fund right now to send kids to camp over the summer, so think about MFI for your support. We move now to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is used for expediency and efficiency and deliberate dispatch by acting upon certain articles as a group. For reference, you can look to Pages Eighteen and Nineteen of the Report of the Warrant. I will now identify the articles to be placed on the 2019 Consent Calendar, and as I read a brief synopsis, if you would like further discussion on any of these articles, please signify by saying "hold." If held, the subject article will be taken up individually. So for passage, we have Article Two to accept the report of the town officers, Article Three to accept the cemetery perpetual care funds, Article Four to vote revolving fund expenditure limits. And for dismissal, we have Article Six, which was to appropriate funds for a prior year unpaid bill, Article Twelve to appropriate $350,000 for repairs of the West Street Bridge, and Article Thirty-One to appropriate additional funds to various FY20 operating budgets that Christine referred to. I will now offer a motion that Articles Two, Three, Four be passed as printed in the warrant, and that Articles Five, Twelve, and Thirty-One be dismissed. Do I have a second? Seconded, so moved.
Sixty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Let's try that again, for dismissals, Article Six, Twelve, and Thirty-One. Do I have a second to that? We are seconded, so moved. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I declare that the motion carries unanimously. The next articles that we're going to consider are Articles Number Eight, Seven, and Eight. They would be found beginning on Page Twenty-two of the warrant report. Article Seven is an article to fix the salaries and compensations of elected officers. This is my favorite article, and it's found on Page Twenty-two. And we have a report from Warrant Committee Member Jeremy Marsette, and a motion.
Yes, there's a positive motion, move that Article Seven be passed as printed in the warrant report. Each year, town meeting must vote the salaries and compensation of Medfield's elected officers. The only elected officers receiving a salary are the Town Clerk, Board of Assessors, and the Board of Selectmen. The assessors and the selectmen each receive $900 per year, that's unchanged from prior years. The Town Clerk's proposed salary reflects a 2% general salary increase from the prior year. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions on Article Seven? Requires just a simple majority? Nobody wants to stand and amend the moderator's compensation, I guess, again? Okay, so without any amendments, then, we'll vote on the motion as presented by Mr. Marsette. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Article Eight is an article to amend the Personnel Administrative Plan, classifications of Positions and Pay Schedule. This is Stand in Business, it can be found on Page Twenty-three of the Report on the Warrant. And again, I'd ask Jeremy Marsette if he would give us a motion.
Move that Article Eight be passed as printed in the warrant report.
And do you have a report, please?
The town employees' salaries are set by the schedules included in the warrant report and included in the Personnel Administration Plan. School Department employees by state statute are excluded from the Personnel Administration Plan. Most police, fire, and school department employees are covered by collective bargaining agreements. Police and fire personnel are included in the presented pay schedules according to the rates set forth in their collective bargaining agreements. The Personnel Board has recommended a general salary increase for town non-union personnel of 2%. Managerial positions are also eligible to receive merit increases based on performance. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on this article, Article Eight? If there are none, we'll vote on the motion as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll deem it carries unanimously. We're now going to move to Articles Number Twenty-Three, Twenty-Four, and Twenty-Five. These are the articles that were sponsored by the Planning Board, all having to do with zoning. All three of them require a two-thirds majority vote in order to be passed, and I will turn to Warrant Committee Member Newton Thompson for a motion on Article Number Twenty-Three.
Move that Article Twenty-Three be passed as printed in the warrant.
Okay, and do you have a report?
Would you like me to read the article?
Uh, no.
Okay. This article is in five parts, the first of which creates a new zoning map overlay district that reverts zoning requirements to the pre-2017 permitting processes and dimensional requirements for multifamily developments, but does not apply to new single-family or two-family dwellings in the USSOD district. The second section of the article would amend the Table of Use Regulations to allow multifamily residential developments by site plan approval from the Planning Board in the RU zoning district as long as they are shown in the Upper Spring Street Overlay District. The third section of the article would amend the Table of Area Regulations to allow multifamily residential developments in the RU zoning district as long as they are shown in the Upper Spring Street Overlay District. The fourth section of the article proposes new review criteria that the Planning Board would use when would use when reviewing new applications for multifamily developments, which are consistent with the planning board's special permit performance standards. The fifth and final section of the article amends the existing inclusionary zoning bylaw to include multifamily proposals in the Upper Spring Street overlay district so that there is an affordable component. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. And do we have a report from the planning board? Teresa?
Hi, Teresa James from the planning board. As the warrant committee presented, you know, pursuant to the, regarding Article 23, which is for the Upper Spring Street overlay district, that pursuant to the provisions of the Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held a series of public meetings on December 3, 2018, January 7, 2019, and February 4, 2019 to consider amending the Town of Medfield zoning bylaw as set out in Article 23. The public hearing for the first four parts of this article was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on November 16 and 23 of 2018. And the public hearing for the last section of the article was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on December 14 and 21, 2018. This article is a package of amendments related to the multifamily residential dwellings in that portion of the RU district along Spring Street between O Village Square and Baxter Park. As you walked in the building, I hope you saw there was a handout, but there is a nice little map, but that's what we're talking about as the Upper Spring Street overlay district. And the first three sections of this warrant article restores the bulk and dimensional controls for that small area of town that were in place prior to the 2017 zoning changes that we made, that were instituted to reduce the amount of multifamily dwellings in the RU district. If you remember in 2017, we came as a town after doing intense study and looking at the RU district and made some adjustments there. The fourth section of the article, though, proposes an additional layer of review not found in the pre-2017 process whereby the planning board is now proposing additional site plan review criteria to incentivize better submissions. And the final portion of that article amends the existing exclusionary zoning provision to include that Upper Spring Street area. And as a whole, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend this passage.
Thank you. Teresa, why don't you stay right there for these articles? Okay, so any questions? Are there any questions for the planning board or any comments from the floor? If you would approach microphone number one, please.
I just have a quick question.
You could just, I forgot to say this. Do you mind just saying your name and your address?
Martha Weinchub, 18 Arnold Drive. So, I just have a quick question about the map. It's just the shaded-in area you're talking about for the article, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If there are none, we'll, please, microphone number one.
Deb Miriam, 70 Spring Street. Also, my great-great-great-great-grandfather attended town meeting in the 1700s here.
Oh, that's awesome.
So, I think it's an awesome thing that we are allowed to do this. So, I'm in that overlay district. And so, what I'd like to make sure that people understand that whether, when this overlay goes through, it will allow us as a town to ask for grant money that we can't get otherwise. And the reason for that is that this overlay district will require that one out of every six units be inclusionary housing, which has not existed before. So, that actually increases the opportunity for us to be able to get some grants. And I think that some of them priority to access to other grants such as funding sources that are critical to many of the forthcoming projects. Medfield must meet, in order for us to continue with not worrying so much about larger inclusionary projects going through, we have to meet at least four out of nine of the best practices in development of our town. This overlay allows us to get the fourth one. We only have three. So, this overlay would allow us to be able to get the fourth best practice. The planning board has a much stronger review criteria for this time. And I think that there's been maybe a little bit of conversation that it would cause twice as many houses to be developed as there were in the 2017. But my little strip of land actually changes from four to five. So, we're not talking about a huge change in terms of development, but it will, just the overlay without any development happening. I've been in my house for 43 years. I'm not going anywhere. The Hazers next door have been in their house for more than five decades. They're not going anywhere. The Hinckleys beyond them, the house belonged to both Chris Hager and Nancy Hinckley. They were born and brought up in that house. They're not going anywhere. So, we're advocating for this to pass so that we can actually meet the criteria for inclusionary housing and make us eligible for grants. Thank you.
Neil, thank you for that explanation. Microphone number two.
Chris Potts on 7 Curve Street. I was disappointed on the dates for the public hearing for this particular proposal just because I just didn't work. I had conflicts those nights. But I was heavily involved with the discussions and the meetings that led to the 2017 vote to reduce the change to the bylaw in the RU district. And as a Curve Street resident on a very historic street off of the south side of Spring Street of Route 27, that is equally historic, I have a lot of concerns about the north section of Route 27 becoming a lot more dense. We are dealing with tremendous traffic problems as it is on Curve Street and also on South Street and with more development on the northern part of 27 leading into the center of town. It causes a lot of concern for me. In particular, in these meetings that led to the last change in the zoning in 2017, listening to the comments of the residents who live in this section that is affected by this overlay district, they were the ones, there was a core group of residents from that section that really fought that 2017 change. And now, I feel like this change today that's being proposed reverses a lot of good that was done by that committee, that there was a lot of thought, a lot of research, and a lot of effort into that. And it just, I'm very concerned about the overdevelopment and the multifamily housing that's going to create a lot more problems, a lot more density than we really need in that section. So, I'm against it.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Does anybody want to address that? Any other further comments? Okay, we'll put it to a vote. It does require a two-thirds vote. It's a motion to create a new zoning overlay district called the Proposed Upper Spring Street Overlay District. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? If I could have a show of hands, please, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? I'm going to deem it does pass by the two-thirds required. Before we move on to Article number 24, I want to welcome Representative Denise Garlick. Thank you, Denise, for being here again. Does a great job representing our interests up in the State House. Thank you. Article 24 is also a zoning amendment. It can be found on page 53 of the report on the warrant. It is an article to amend the code of Chapter 300 zoning Article 14 for special permits. Warrant committee member Christine Barton has a motion and a report.
Yes, a positive motion, move that Article 24 be passed as printed in the warrant.
Okay, and a report, please.
This article replaces the existing ZVA special permit criteria with the special permit criteria that was adopted for the planning board in 2017. If passed, both the ZVA and planning board will apply the same criteria when hearing a special permit application. The members of the ZVA support this language. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Okay, and we have a report from the planning board.
Yes, and I'm going to address both Articles 24 and 25 as we held our public hearings the same day. So, pursuant to the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held a series of public hearings on January 7, 2019, and February 4, 2019 to consider amending the Town of Medfield zoning bylaws set out in Articles 24 and 25. And as mentioned, Article 24, we're updating the special primary permit criteria used by the zoning board of Plano Hills and aligning it with our planning board's special permit review process. And the planning board voted unanimously to recommend passage of Article 24.
Okay. Questions or comments on Article 24? Okay, if there are none, we will put it to a vote. The motion is read by Christine Barton. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I deem it passes by the two-thirds required. Article 25, the third of the zoning articles, we also have a motion and a report from warrant committee member Christine Barton.
Move that Article 25 be passed as printed in the warrant. This article provides consistency in the terminology used within the Medfield zoning bylaw, which should have been updated in 2014 with the codification process. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Do you need another opportunity, Teresa?
Yeah, and the planning board voted unanimously as well to recommend passage for Article 25. And we held the same public hearings on January 7, 2019, and February 4, 2019.
Okay, are there questions or comments on this article? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I deem it carries by the two-thirds required. Thank you, and thanks to the planning board for all your hard work. Appreciate it. We're going to go now to our lottery system, and here we go. First article that we'll consider will be Article number 17. Article number 17 is to appropriate $90,000 for repairs and studies relative to the design of the Danielson Ritchie's Pond. The article itself can be found on page 45 of the warrant report. Warrant committee member Jeremy Marsette has a motion and a report.
Article 17, move that the town appropriate $90,000 and to meet said appropriation, $60,000 be raised by the FY20 tax levy and $30,000 be transferred from the Medfield Conservation Trust Fund for the purpose of funding design work necessary to determine the cost of making repairs to the Danielson Ritchie Pond Dam. And that the board of selectmen, in consultation with the Conservation Commission, be authorized to apply for and receive federal, state, and/or private grants or loans and to enter into contracts with private contractors to undertake such work. The Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Dam Safety Office has issued the town a certificate of noncompliance and dam safety order citing deficiencies at the Danielson Ritchie Pond Dam. The pond and dam are located east of Route 27, just south of Homestead Drive. The Office of Dam Safety classifies the dam as a small-sized dam with significant hazard potential. The order and recent inspections have found the dam to be in poor condition, listing a number of deficiencies. The Town of Medfield, through the Conservation Commission, is responsible for the care and maintenance of the dam. The Commission and Public Works Department have worked to identify the repairs necessary to bring this town-owned dam into compliance with a permit issued by the Dam Safety Office. The cost of the engineering necessary to address the noncompliance has been estimated at $90,000, $30,000 of which will be sourced from the Medfield Conservation Trust Fund and the balance funded by the tax levy. The engineering scope would include preparing, the required Phase II inspection, subsurface investigations, stability analysis, hydrologic analysis, permitting, and final design. It is anticipated that a subsequent capital funding request would be brought before a future town meeting for construction funding. The cost of the construction is not known at this time. However, it is possible that some of the work may be conducted by the Public Works crews in an effort to reduce costs. The Dam Safety Office has extended the deadline for compliance with the order to June 30, 2021. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments regarding Article 17? If there are, please approach the microphone. If there are none, we will put it to a vote. We'll put it to a vote. It requires just a simple majority. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem Article 17 carries. Article 13. Article 13 is an article to amend the code of Chapter 30, Finance, Section 36 of the Disposal of Personal Property. It was offered by the Public Works Department. It can be found on page 43 of the report on the warrant. And warrant committee chairperson Mike Pastore has a motion and a report. I'm sorry, Amanda Hall.
Move that Article 13 be passed as printed in the warrant. Under the current code, the Town of Massachusetts requires any department to seek town meeting approval to dispose of any personal property with a value of $1,000 or greater. This article would increase that threshold and allow the board of selectmen to hear any request to dispose of personal property with a value of less than $10,000. Massachusetts General State Laws, Chapter 30B, prescribes procedures for the disposition of surplus supplies with a value of $10,000 or more and requires that the procurement officer dispose of surplus supplies with an estimated net value of less than $10,000 pursuant to the town bylaw. Therefore, this bylaw change would bring the Medfield bylaws into closer alignment with state law. The greatest impact of the bylaw change would be with respect to vehicles that the town is looking to surplus. Currently, due to the $1,000 threshold, most vehicles are traded in rather than sold, resulting in a lower return to the town. As a result of this bylaw change, the older vehicles could be sold for a greater return on investment. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on this motion? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. Requires just a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I deem that Article 13, the motion, carries. Article 18. Article 18 is an article to appropriate funds raised from local meals tax to improve the economic vitality of the town. The article can be found on page 45 of the warrant report. Was offered by the board of selectmen. And our motion, our report, will be provided by warrant committee member Bob Sliney.
Move that the town appropriate $1,000, said some to be raised on the fiscal year 20 tax levy to make improvements to the economic vitality of the town. The funding in this article comes from receipts for the meals tax, which is estimated to be approximately $150,000 in fiscal year 2020. In prior years, the town has appropriated $15,000 annually to the selectmen's fund. Funds have been used for the pocket park, the holiday scroll, and beautification at and around Town Hall. Projects under consideration include funding for beautification and landscaping to the front of the Town Hall, tree planting, landscaping at the Peak House, and increased lighting for the holiday scroll. The current balance in this fund is approximately $19,000. And considering the history of spending and the need to control spending, we recommend funding of $1,000 in 2020. The warrant committee recommends passage with the minority report.
Okay, the minority report.
While the usefulness of this fund is not being challenged, it was created as a $15,000 fund to be used at the discretion of the board of selectmen. Currently, as you heard, it has in excess of that amount. At the beginning of the budget process, the warrant committee reminded department heads that revolving funds are not to be used as long-term savings accounts and provided guidance that those funds should be used for their original purpose. A minority of the warrant committee believes that the board of selectmen should be held to the same standard and that this fund should remain at a $15,000 level.
Questions or comments on this motion, article? Microphone number two, Mr. Potts.
Jerry Potts, 7 Curve Street. I was just getting bored. There was no controversy. No, that isn't it. So, I am, in listening to the minority report, I am curious why the $15,000 that's supposed to be for economic development isn't being deployed. It seems like there was a commitment made that the town should live up to. There was a vote made, money allocated, and it just seems like $1,000 really is not much given the fact that we're paying the taxes. I eat a lot in town, so I might have like 2,000 of it. So, I'm just saying. So, that's my question.
Okay, good question. Anybody from the board of selectmen or warrant committee want to address that? Go ahead.
The account that we have here when it was first created, it was on the warrant committee. And at the time, when the meals tax article was up for consideration, at the time, on the warrant committee, when we discussed that, we thought that if we were going to tax businesses in town, recognizing we were going to generate some significant revenues, we ought to commit to returning some amount of those taxes to the businesses. So, the reason this account was established in the first place was to promote economic development in town with the thought that our businesses would be a little happier about paying taxes if they knew at least some of that was coming back. Now that I'm on the board of selectmen, we've used that fund when people have come in with requests for ways to improve the town, but we haven't deliberately tried to burn that money up just because we had it. So, the short answer on why it's grown and why it hasn't been deployed is we've funded, I don't believe we've turned down any requests for improvements or economic development expenditures to support a more vital downtown, but those are the requests that come in, so that's why we have that balance.
Any other questions?
Dick McCullough, 9 Granite Street. I'm kind of confused. How much money do we really have to work with if we vote just $1,000? Do we still have $15,000 left over from another year? Then I think I heard 90. Then I think I heard 19,000 somewhere, so I have no idea where we stand. Could you kind of clarify what's available? It could be spent, and I really support the beautification, particularly since we made the commitment to the Best Pocket Park next to the Town Hall and the other landscaping features that are really desperately needed in front of the Town Hall at this time. Thank you.
The current balance of the account is just about $17,000, and to address your issue in front of the Town Hall, I've been working with the Medfield Garden Club, and we hope to have a plan for the front of Town Hall very shortly.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor. The motion, the town appropriate $1,000 for the sum to be raised on the FY 20 tax levy. That's our motion. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, I'm going to have a show of hands if I could. All in favor. And opposed? I'm going to rule that it carries by the majority required. Article 29. Article 29 is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of land on Main Street, found on page 57 of the warrant report, an article offered by the Board of Selectmen. And on this one, we do have a motion and a report from Warrant Committee Chairperson Michael Pastore.
Thank you. Motion to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of land from Michael R. Taylor and Teresa G. Taylor, as printed in the warrant. This parcel is already under a conservation restriction, which the Taylors previously granted to the town when they were living on Main Street in the house on an abutting parcel. So other than passive recreation, including possible pedestrian access to Vine Lake Cemetery, the town will be pretty limited as to use. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions and comments on Article 29? Microphone number one.
Rob Brig, 52 South Street. Just for edification on this piece of land, it is historically one of the most important pieces of land in downtown Medfield. It represents probably the last undeveloped piece of land, dates to 1651 in the Town of Medfield. So when you walk through the old section, and you look across, and you see the topography of this land, you can use your imagination to figure that this is what downtown Medfield looked like when it was founded. So historically, it's important for our edification and our support.
Thank you for that. Other questions, comments? If there are none, we will vote on the motion to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept this gift. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I deem that the motion carries. Next article is Article 11. Article 11 is an article to appropriate $782,145 from the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund. It was offered by the Board of Selectmen and our Capital Budget Committee. It can be found on page 42. It does require a two-thirds vote for passage, and Warrant Committee member Newton Thompson has a motion and a report.
Move that the town appropriate $782,125 and transfer said sum from the Municipal Buildings Capital Stabilization Fund for projects, as printed in the warrant. At the 2018 annual town meeting and the subsequent override in June, the voters of Medfield approved the creation and funding for a special-purpose stabilization fund entitled Municipal Buildings Capital Stabilization Fund. The purpose of this fund is to fund new construction, capital repairs and improvements to municipal buildings, and structural and systemic components thereof. The projects listed above have been identified and recommended by the Capital Budget Committee to be completed utilizing funding available in the Municipal Buildings Capital Stabilization Fund. The projects are either for repairs needed to town and school buildings and infrastructure, or to commence technical engineering studies of major structural elements and systems for those buildings, which will determine the specific improvements needed and their cost, all for the purpose of protecting the town's investment in its public buildings. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Good. Are there any questions on Article 11? Comments? If there are none, that does require a two-thirds vote. We'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, I'll deem it carries by the two-thirds required. Our next article is Article 14. Article 14 is an article to transfer Uber/Lift ride-sharing funds, found on page 43 of the warrant report, offered by the Board of Selectmen, and we have a motion and a report from Warrant Committee Chairperson Michael Pastore.
To see if the town will vote to transfer $763 in funds received from the Mass DOT for the town's share of the fee charge for Uber/Lift or other ride-sharing services originating in the town, said funds to be used for road and/or sidewalk improvements, or do any act in relation thereto. Under Chapter 187 of the Acts of 2016, ride-sharing companies doing business in Massachusetts are subject to a per-ride assessment of 20 cents. Half of that total amount assessed per year is distributed proportionally to the municipalities. $763 is Medfield's share of that assessment, which according to the statute must be used, quote, "to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services," end quote. The Board of Selectmen has earmarked these funds for road and sidewalk repairs, which is in line with the language and the intent of the statute, particularly sidewalks in this town need to be addressed. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Any questions on Article 14 or comments? It requires just a simple majority. If there are none, we have a motion to transfer these Uber/Lift ride-sharing funds. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Then the motion carries. The next motion is Article number 16. Article number 16 is an article to authorize acceptance of a gift of land on Mohawk Street. It was sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, can be found on page 44 of the warrant report, and we have a motion and a report from Warrant Committee member Christine Barton.
Move that Article 16 be passed as printed in the warrant. This is an unbillable parcel of land, abutting wetlands, located in Medfield and Norfolk. The property owners have offered to gift the portion located in Medfield to the town to avoid any additional taxes. If voters approve this article, a plan will have to be prepared to subdivide the property into two parcels, one in Norfolk and one in Medfield, before a deed can be prepared. There have been discussions with the Norfolk County Engineer to undertake preparation of the subdivision plan so that Medfield is not burdened with such costs. This article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the Medfield parcel for municipal purposes when ready to be conveyed by the owner. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 16, on the motion? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. Requires just a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? And I deem that that article passes. Article 26. Article 26 is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a ground lease for the development of senior housing on town-owned land off Ice House Road. This is an article that was sponsored by the Affordable Housing Trust. You can find the article on page 55 of the warrant report. Article 26 does require two-thirds for passage, and we do have a motion and a report from Warrant Committee member Bob Slaney.
Article 26. Move that Article 26 be passed as printed in the warrant, except that the phrase "age 62-plus" after the phrase "senior households" be added. This article pertains to 5.48 acres of a 9.7-acre parcel purchased by the town in 2001 for 1.1 million. The assessed value of the 9.7 acres is $194,000. Proceeds from any sales shall be deposited in reserves, stabilization trust, or other fund designated to the fund's town's long-term liabilities in accordance with Section 5 of the Town of Medfield Financial Policies. The terms of the development of property will be senior housing with handicapped accessible units. A minimum of 25% will be affordable, deed restricted with 70% local preference, with reasonable initial pricing and sustainable resale pricing for a period of time. In January 2019, the Senior Housing Council released the results of a 2018 survey of Medfield households with at least one person 55 or older. The survey indicated a high demand for senior housing, with 63% of respondents stating they would move to senior housing in the next two years if it were available. The development of this property will contribute to the availability of senior housing. The warrant committee supports passage of this article.
Okay, well, thank you. And we have a presentation, short presentation, from Selectmen Mike Markucci.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I'm pleased to present Article 26 on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust. This relates to, as mentioned in the article, the so-called Hinckley parcel of land and the part that's in green with the star there, that's next to the Council on Aging. The purpose here is to enhance the woefully inadequate supply of senior housing in the Town of Medfield. We have ten, two senior housing surveys over the course of the last three years, which have identified a substantial need for additional senior housing in Medfield, a need that is not being met currently by the market. And this is a piece of land that the town can use to advance this when private developers on privately-owned land are not pushing for these kinds of developments. Now, there is a reality check to this article and to this issue. I mean, there is a reason it has been more than 20 years since any senior-focused housing has been developed in Medfield. We cannot satisfy every single senior in Medfield and what everyone wants. We're limited by the law, and we're limited by the market. So we really have two choices on this issue coming off those senior housing studies. One is just to do nothing and wait to see if the federal or state government does something. Or the second choice is the one that the Affordable Housing Trust has opted for, which is to do what we can to make some small amount of progress. So this is a modest first step. We're talking 20, 24 units of housing based on the original model for this property that was identified by the Medfield Hospital Master Planning Committee. This would be homeownership. It would be restricted to 62-plus, and it would be a similar-type development to Turtle Brook. So those of you who are familiar with Turtle Brook over off of Dale Street, it is a similar concept on this piece of land. Medfield preference for market-rate developments, we cannot restrict the sale of market-rate housing in Medfield to Medfield residents. It's not legal under federal law. State law, when there is an affordable development, a so-called Friendly 40B, which this would be, we are allowed to request, at the sufferance of the state, the maximum Medfield preference, which would be 70% of the affordable units. And because of the work we have done so far, we have asked for this preference in every project that we've done, and we've received it. Development process, if the town meeting approves this, the Board of Selectmen will issue an RFP to private developers. The Council on Aging will have input onto that RFP and to the specifications, and we'll pick the best proposal that best meets the parameters we're laying out tonight. And it could be a two-to-three-year process from approval tonight to somebody actually moving in. From a financial standpoint, if you compare it again to Turtle Brook, which is a 24-unit for sale senior development in Medfield, generates about $150,000 of tax revenue per year. Impact on town services are minimal, few if any additional schoolchildren, so no cost impact there. And we do have capacity in the police department, certainly the fire department and the DPW, to handle any additional calls. Under our Housing Production Plan adopted in 2016, for those of you who have followed along, we have made good progress. We are about 35 to 45 units short of achieving compliance with the state's 40B law through at least 2030, based on what our estimate is for the census in 2020. We'll need about 35 to 45 units in addition to what's currently in the pipeline. This would add six units to our affordable count. This is just generally a sketch of a potential concept plan. The exact layout and design will come from the developers in response. So the trust certainly asks for your support of this article. Again, it's a modest first step. It's not going to be everything to anybody, but it would move the needle a little bit and show support in the town for developing some additional senior housing. Thank you.
I'm going to stay there in case there are questions. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, well, if there are none, we'll put it to a vote. It does require two-thirds vote. We have one question here on microphone number two.
Yes, Jim Nail, 97 Hartford Street. As I recall, last year, there was a proposal with a somewhat similar goal. It was an overlay district, and it had some similar weaknesses that I saw very briefly that you talked about in that we can't restrict market-rate housing. And what I didn't see there is for the affordable units, if I remember correctly, last year, the affordable units, there was no restriction on resale, whether they would remain affordable.
So that's a difference here. So under the overlay district, would have done this as a market-rate project. Because this is going under the 40B, Friendly 40B, the affordable units, for all of the affordable units we develop in Medfield, there's a permanent deed restriction. So for the six affordable units, they would remain affordable in perpetuity. The exact resale price would be redefined on each sale based on the state's formula for calculating that.
And though I know the number of units will depend on the developer and his plan, do you have an estimate of how many of those 400-plus units will be able to meet with this?
Probably, if I had to, the median would be 24. I would say between 20 to 30, best guess is 24. When the hospital committee laid it out, they laid it out as a 24-unit development. So there's just not that much room there for more than that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. There are no other questions or comments. We'll put it to a vote. It is a motion authorizing the Board of Selectmen to enter into a ground lease for the development of senior housing on town-owned land off of Ice House Road. It does require a two-thirds vote for passage. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'm going to deem that it does carry by two-thirds vote. Next article is Article number 27. Article number 27 is an article to amend the code of Chapter 15 Affordable Housing Trust Membership. This one is also offered by the Affordable Housing Trust, found on page 55 of the warrant report, and Michael Pastore has a motion and a report.
To see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Medfield bylaws, Chapter 15 Affordable Housing Trust Fund composition, as printed in the warrant, or do or act anything in relation thereto. This is effectively a housekeeping article that merely amends the composition of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to account for the fact that the former Affordable Housing Committee was dissolved. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Okay, are there any questions and comments on this article, on Article 29? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Nope, and the motion carries. Our next article is Article number 21. Article number 21 is an article sponsored by the Transfer Station, the Recycling Committee, and the Board of Selectmen. Article 21 is to adopt a new bylaw to add a new Chapter 195 for a plastic checkout bag prohibition, and we have a motion and a report by Warrant Committee person Amanda Hall.
Move to amend the code of the Town of Medfield bylaws to add a new Chapter 195 plastic bag checkout prohibition, as printed in the warrant. To date, plastic bag regulations have been approved in 99 towns and cities in the Commonwealth. Article 21 is consistent with the other towns and cities that have recently passed such bans. The Medfield Plastic Bag Reduction Initiative was formed and has conducted research and put forward the article with the support of the committee. Megan Sullivan will be presenting shortly in greater detail around this proposal. On a state level, a bill H 771 was proposed in the legislature earlier this year, which has been co-sponsored by many other state senators and house members. The bill calls for stores across Massachusetts to ban providing single-use plastic bags at checkout, and is viewed as very likely to pass. If the state legislation passes, it would deem only, it would deem any pre-existing regulations on the matter null and void. If the state legislation does not pass, then Medfield will have in place regulations that help to address the negative impact of plastic bags, that plastic bags have on the environment, and that are in keeping with the growing number of other towns and cities across the Commonwealth. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. We have a short presentation, I think, from the committee.
Together with Andrea Costello, the Medfield Plastic Reduction Initiative, the Transfer Station Recycling Committee, we are here to present this bylaw proposal. I'm going to give you an overview of it and then talk about why it's important. Essentially, we are talking about eliminating single-use plastic bags at checkout, and this is the bag you would get when you pay, and this would be at retail stores and at restaurants. So that's what the, is included in the bylaw. Not affected by the bylaw would be bags such as your, the bag you get your newspaper in or your dry cleaning bag, bags you would get within the store to gather produce or put around something that might be dripping or at the deli. And retail locations will continue to offer paper bags. So what we're really hoping is that you begin or continue to make reusable bags part of every shopping trip. So you can see there's a great variety of options for you for every occasion. You've got your traditional bags. The bottom-left corner is one of my favorites. It's brightly colored and it collapses into that little pouch. I can keep it in my purse. You can throw it in your glove compartment, put it in your backpack, so you always have it. So you can see there's a great variety. My favorite one, though, is the top right. It's just the grab-and-go. You always have that with you. Just grab your stuff and co. Local merchants already sell, many local merchants already sell reusable bags, and also the swap is opening on May 1st, and I understand it that there's always a great supply of reusable bags there. So bringing your bag is really a habit that you can easily adapt to. It's just what you have to get used to. We need to make a little change. I only had to leave my groceries at the Shaw's checkout line and run back to my car twice till it has become a habit. Now, every time I head into a store, I do think about my bags and taking them in. So that's the what of the bylaw, and now I would like to talk to you about the why. You may have received a handout on your way in tonight, and I'm sure you'll agree the numbers are startling. You might even call them frightening. We just start about, start out talking about a single plastic bag, but it quickly becomes a story about a pile of bags when you return home from a shopping trip. And then in no time, each man, woman, and child has used over 300 plastic bags a year, and that's over 4 million bags in Medfield each year. In addition to the numbers, there are other problems with plastic bags as well. While they first appear to be a cheap alternative, in the long run, they're very costly. We use a non-renewable fossil fuel, like oil or natural gas, to make these bags that are in use for 12 minutes, but they last forever. And even if the bags are recycled, after the second use of the plastic, it still lasts forever. So plastics also have negative health impacts and environmental, oops, impacts through their lifecycle. From the way they are produced, to the chemicals that leach out during their life, and to the fact that plastics last forever. They don't biodegrade. They just break down into smaller and smaller pieces of plastics called microplastics. You may have heard that these microplastics are showing up in the food chain. So plastic is now everywhere and showing up in more and more places in our daily lives. You've seen plastic bags as litter. You've seen plastic bags on the beach where they're unsightly and also end up in the ocean where they threaten marine life and end up in our food supply. With so many problems associated with plastic and plastic bags, eliminating plastic anywhere we can is a step in the right direction. By passing this bylaw tonight, we'll make a small and easy change that will have a big impact. We'll eliminate 4 million plastic bags in Medfield every year. We will eliminate 59,000 pounds of plastic bag trash in Medfield every year, and that's after accounting for what's already being recycled. That's how much we throw away. And we will have no negative budget impact, which is always good. We are not alone in our effort to make a difference. 99 other towns. You can see my slide shows 95 towns. Just last week, it was 95 towns. There are now 99 towns. Wouldn't it be nice to be Town 100? We can do that tonight. By passing this bylaw, Medfield is saying that sustainability is important, that we're willing to look forward, and we're willing to make a change and use less plastic for the health of our planet. So I hope that you will join us, the Plastic Bag Reduction Initiative, the Transfer Station Recycling Committee, the Warrant Committee, the Board of Health, the Selectmen, and the 99 other towns in Medfield, and pass Article 21 tonight. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your initiative. Microphone number one.
Yes, I'm Eve Potts from Green Street. And in Facebook just recently, someone said that it would be very inconvenient for seniors to not be able to use plastic bags. I'm an 89-year-old senior, and, not that I go about bragging about it, but I just wanted to say that being a senior, four years ago, I started, discontinued using plastic bags. Couple main reasons for me. If they put too much in the bag, the handle would fall off and all my groceries would be on the parking lot. That was number one. And number two, I just, they all kind of fell apart when I put them in my trunk. So four years ago, I changed over to having a shopping bag reusable, and I've been doing it for four years. And as Megan said, she's right. It takes a while to get used to it. But once you do, it's kind of like putting on your seatbelt. You still, you automatically use it. And what's so nice about these, the handles don't fall apart. Also, you can stand it up in your trunk. It doesn't all slop over like plastic bags. So I just wanted to say that I'm certainly in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see if anybody wants to speak in opposition after that. Being no further comments, we'll put Article 21 to a vote. It requires just a simple majority. Oh, we do have a comment. Article number one.
Just one quick comment. So, Richard Judge over on Juniper Lane. So I am the supplier to the restaurant industry. To give you an idea of how many bags we sell to the restaurant industry, I would say we would fill this room once a month with bags. I cannot express my gratitude enough for the people who are making the change to get rid of these bags because they, even though we sell them, we sell them out of convenience as well. The bags come from China, they're shipped over on huge container ships, and they end up, so they take up very little space. When they're shipped to us, we'll have 2,500 bags in a, in a satchel. Once they're dispersed, that 25, the volume that that takes up in our landfills is, you can just imagine. Add, add one ounce of air to every bag and you've got 10 times the size. So my compliments to the folks who are passing this. I'm disappointed that the state hasn't taken the lead on this, but maybe our voices will be heard and we'll, we'll start the transfer of away-from-plastics, away-from-plastic straws eventually, I hope to see. It's unbelievable how much of that ends up in our streams, oceans, et cetera, and how much of it ends up mixing into our, our, our food of next generation. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, let's put Article 21 to a vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt a new bylaw, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, the next article is Article Number 5. Article 5 is an article in which we vote to accept Chapter 44, Section 53-F, and establish a PEG fund. It's offered by the Board of Selectmen. Warrant committee member Christine Barton has a positive motion and a report.
Move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-F and 3/4 to establish a public, educational, and governmental PEG access and cable-related fund to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access services and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement, which begins on July 1, 2019. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue has issued new guidelines on how cities and towns handle the distribution of funds received in connection with the franchise agreements between the town and the cable operators. This article creates a special revenue fund as the accounting mechanism before the funds are distributed to Medfield TV for public, educational, and/or governmental access cable television services. One issue with the language of the statute requires that the funds be appropriated by town meeting. This creates a hardship on the local cable companies, who now have to wait for a vote at town meeting for an appropriation of these funds. However, Medfield TV has been preparing for this and have enough funds saved to operate until an appropriation is made at the next town meeting. A bill has been filed in the Senate to amend the language of the statute to eliminate the word "appropriate" in order to allow a municipality to direct pay the cable operator. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Do we have any questions or comments on the motion on Article 5? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 carries. Our next article is Article Number 28. Article Number 28 is an article offered by the Board of Selectmen, found on page 56, to amend the code, Chapter 10-8, regarding town clerk duties. And we have a, a motion, a positive motion, and a report from Michael Pastore.
To see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Medfield, Chapter 10, Section 10-8, notification of appointment by striking said section in its entirety and substituting there, therefore, as printed in the warrant. The town has been adding language to the end of each bylaw change since codification in 2014 to allow the clerk to make non-substantive formatting changes. This article today obviates the need to do that by giving the clerk the authority to do this automatically as to every change. So the warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions on the motion on Article 28? Requires just a simple majority to be passed. Okay, so I will ask all in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion on Article 28 passes. Our next article is Article 19. Article 19 is an article that provides for the transfer of funds from sewer betterments paid in advance to the sewer stabilization fund. It was offered by the Town Administrator's Office, found on page 46, and Amanda Hall has a, has a motion and a report.
Move that the town transfer $85,000 from sewer betterments paid in advance to the sewer stabilization fund. Sewer betterments are assessed to property owners when sewers are extended to their properties. That betterment can be paid off all at once or apportioned over five, 10, or 25 years, and the annual assessments plus interest are added to the real estate tax bill for the third and fourth payments, actual tax bills. Property owners may choose an early payoff of this assessment, usually done with the, when a property is sold or refinanced. The money from these early payoffs are set aside and appropriated to a sewer betterment stabilization fund, which is used to spread out the use of these funds over the remaining life of the bonds issued to pay for the work. This year, as for several years, $400,000 is recommended to be taken from this stabilization fund to offset the annual sewer debt payments. The balance in the fund as of December 31, 2018, was $529,319.18. The sewer extension debt will be paid off in fiscal year 2022, at which time the sewer stabilization fund will close. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions, comments on Article 19? Requires just a simple majority for passage. If there are no questions and comments, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Our next article is Article Number 10, which is our capital budget. Staying with precedent, we'll consider Articles 9 and Articles 10 together, so we'll be doing our budgets now. We'll start with our operating budget. Our operating budget can be found on page 29. It does require a two-thirds majority for passage. Beginning on page 31, I'm going to read the line items, the budget line items. I'm just going to read their caption. If you would like some further consideration on any of these budget line items, just please yell out "hold," and we'll come back to these. Okay, everybody comfortable? You've seen it before. Here we go. Workers' compensation insurance, health and life insurance, liability insurance, unemployment compensation, Medicare insurance, county retirement contribution, Selectmen salaries, Selectmen operations, town administrator salaries, town administrator operations, warrant committee operations, town accountant salaries, town accountant's operations, assessor salary, assessor's operations, treasurer collector salary, treasurer collector operations, highway salaries, highway operations, snow and ice salary, snow and ice operations, street lighting operations, equipment repair and maintenance salaries, equipment repair and maintenance Thank you. I'll come back. Strike that. So we're going back to the top of page 32. I did have those two pages together. We'll go back up there. Thank you. I could hear a rumbling on both sides of me, but I wasn't sure what was happening. But I know it's not good when that rumbling starts, so, okay. Here we go again, back to the top of page 32. Town council operations, human resource salaries, human resource operations, information technology salaries, information technology operations, town clerk election registrar salaries, town clerk and election registrar operations, conservation commission salaries, conservation commission operations, planning salaries, planning operations, zoning and appeal operations, the public buildings and property maintenance salaries, public buildings and property maintenance operations, the town report meeting salaries, town report and meeting operations, police and administrative public safety building operations, police operations salaries, police operations operations, traffic and markings, signs and operations, fire and rescue administration salaries, fire and rescue administration operations, fire and rescue operations salaries, fire and rescue operations operations, inspections salaries, inspections operations, sealers salaries, sealers operations, animal control salaries, animal control operations, tree care salaries, tree care operations, highway salaries, highway operations, snow and ice salaries, snow and ice operations, street lighting operations, equipment repair and maintenance salaries, equipment repair and maintenance operations, sidewalk operations, public works utility operations, solid waste disposal salaries, solid waste disposal operations, cemetery salaries, cemetery operations, health operations, public health nurses operations, mental health nurse operations, Council on Aging personnel, Council on Aging operations, veterans salaries, veterans operations, outreach salaries. Hold on outreach salaries? Outreach operations. Library salaries, library operations, park and recreation salaries, park and recreation operations, historical commission operations, grave markers and flags operations, Memorial Day and Veterans Day operations, arts and cultural council, stabilization fund, the reserve fund, the town debt principal, the town debt interest, regional vocational schools operations, school personnel, school administration and operations, water salaries, water operations, water reserve fund, sewer salaries, sewer operations, sewer reserve fund. And we will hold on article, on line item 01599-1, outreach salaries. The entire budget takes a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to put all of the other articles up for a two-thirds vote, and then we'll come back. Please. And which was which one, Mrs. Honey?
Human Resource.
Human Resource, okay. Okay, with a hold on those two line items, we'll vote the remainder of the budget on a two-thirds basis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's address those one at a time. Let's first address the outreach salaries. And whoever put the hold, if you want to step up to microphone number one.
Jean Minio at Three Alder Road. Given that most of the other salaries are either level or increased, I just am asking why this one has a reduction.
Thanks, Jean. The recommendation for the Medfield youth outreach salaries budget was reduced by $20,000 only after the resignation of the sitting department head, Don Alcott, in recognition of the fact that her position was not likely to be filled right away.
Other questions or comments on this hold? Who held? No, let's just stay on this one for a second. There are no other... That was it? Okay, just a point of order. Okay, and then, so let's put a vote on that one. So it was just a question. It was held. We're now going to vote. It was line item 01599-1, and the warrant committee recommended $116,242. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that will carry by two-thirds. Now we're going to, this is line item 011521. It's on the top of page 32. Human resource salaries, the warrant committee had recommended $78,761, and we had a hold.
I don't know what this is. We had no money last year. The department asked for $30,000. The warrant committee is giving them $78,000. What is it?
Seems like a good question. Okay, warrant.
I can take it unless...
Okay.
If the warrant committee...
No, go ahead, Christine.
So this is typically where we put the merit money that's awarded to the department heads. We determine the amount of merit money, which this year is the difference between $32,000 and $78,000. That amount of merit money will be issued by the Board of Selectmen to department heads based on performance evaluations. We usually put it, well, actually, we didn't have merit last year. There was no merit awarded to any department heads last year, so it would not have been in the budget last year. The reason why we had the $5190 for operations for 2018-2019 was for two executive searches, both for the police chief and the town administrator. We have not used the one for the town administrator, so we'll be returning that money to free cash.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, so again, line item 01-152-1 on human resources salaries provides for $78,761 in our budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, I deem it does carry by the two-thirds required. So now we will vote on the entire budget and the budget numbers as well. So let me grab that from you. Okay, this is our positive motion on our budget under Article 9. I'm going to move that the town appropriate $65,697,205 to the various departmental operating budgets as set forth in Article 9 of the warrant report under the column "Warrant Committee Recommends" and/or as amended on the floor of the town meeting to defray the operating expenses of the town for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019, and that to meet said appropriation, the following sums be raised on the fiscal '20 tax levy and/or transferred from other available funds as follows. Cemetery perpetual care interest $15,000, water enterprise fund $2,016,931, sewer enterprise fund $1,735,776, pension reserve fund $75,000, overlay surplus $200,000, sewer betterment stabilization fund $400,000, bond premium from Sawmill Brook $804, bond premium from the June 2007 issue $2,543, bond premium from the Red Gate Farm $2,183, bond premium from the Medfield High School field renovation $3,000, bond premium from the town garage solar array $3,683, use of school property revolving fund $30,000, MWPAT Title V septic loan receipts $4,100, MSBA Authority BAN interest reimbursements $28,891, MSBA grant to offset the school debt is $1,148,535, and the free cash expected to be transferred to stabilization would be $100,000. So the subtotal of the other revenue sources would be $5,766,346. The tax levy, the fiscal year '20 tax levy subtotal would be $59,930,859. The total Article 9 appropriation for our town budget would be $65,697,205. Any final questions or comments? Okay, we're going to put that budget to a vote, requiring two-thirds of passage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. It's not that hard. Okay. Here we go. Article 10 is our capital budget. Oh, yes, so that, I'm going to deem that did pass by the required two-thirds. Thank you. Article 10 is our capital budget. It can be found on page 40 of the warrant report. It also requires a two-thirds vote. Warrant committee member Sharon Tetro has a motion and a report.
Move that the town appropriate $782,261 for capital expenditures as printed in the warrant report under FY '20 capital budget recommendations under the warrant committee recommends column, and that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to sell or trade town-owned equipment and/or property as set out in the warrant report, the proceeds of which shall be applied to the FY '20 capital budget procurements, and that to meet said appropriation, $550,000 be spent from the water enterprise free cash, $136,000 be spent from sewer enterprise fund free cash, $40,000 be transferred from the ALS revolving fund, and $56,261 be spent from the park and recreation revolving fund as set out in the warrant report. The capital budget committee meets with all town and school departments to review their requests for capital items. A new capital budget policy was put into place for FY '20, which outlines a process for the development of a five-year plan. After careful review, the warrant committee and the Board of Selectmen have agreed to freeze the capital budget for FY '20, except for items funded out of the enterprise funds or revolving funds. The capital budget committee will begin meeting in June of 2019 to develop a comprehensive five-year capital plan that will be presented at the 2020 annual town meeting. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Okay, thank you. Town council informed me that because a baron was removed, it does not require two-thirds votes, so a simple majority will control this. Are there questions and comments on our capital budget? If there aren't, we'll put it to a vote. Simple majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Capital budget passes. Article 22. Article 22 is an article to amend the code, Chapter 130, Fire Protection, to add Section 130-5 on fire hydrant access. It's been offered by our town council and our fire chief. It's on page 49 of the warrant report, and once again, we have a motion and a report from Michael Pastore.
Move that Article 22 be passed as printed in the warrant. This bylaw would require that access to fire hydrants be maintained with a three-foot clearance radius. The article is more restrictive than what's currently in the state fire code with respect to landscaping around a hydrant. Chief Carrico communicated that he has had issues in the past with homeowners who attempt to landscape a fire hydrant away, and would be supportive of the article, even though it was not originally proposed by his department. So the warrant committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions and comments on this article? If there are none, we'll question on microphone number one.
Gary Wheel at Twenty Cross Street. I noticed this article doesn't reference the removal of snow from around hydrants, which I think is a very important thing that we do. Is there another bylaw in town that covers that? Or should this one be amended to do that? I mean, I personally have shoveled my hydrant out without any qualms or anything for the past 30 years, and I think it's everybody's duty to do that. We shouldn't rely on the fire department to do that. If it's the hydrants on our property, I think it's our responsibility. Just thought I'd bring that up. Sounds like...
Yeah, we agree with you. Mr. Sorrell, any thoughts on, you know, on...
It's probably a good idea, it's beyond the scope of the article, that this particular motion, maybe something to think about for the future.
Okay, so there's nothing on the books to require homeowners to keep their hydrants clear, just their goodwill?
Well, it's a self-interest thing if...
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one that's going to burn, fix my house if it burns down, so that's why I uncovered. Thank you very much.
Wonder we could get a quorum on a special town meeting on just that article? I don't know. Okay, so maybe next year. So all in favor of, however, the article now, Article 22, the motion to amend the code, Chapter 130, Fire Protection, to add Section 130-5, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll deem that that motion carries. Article 30. Article 30 is a motion to appropriate $150,000 for the Medfield State Hospital. It was offered by the Board of Selectmen. It's on page 57 of the warrant report, and we have a motion and a report from warrant committee chairperson Michael Pastore.
Move that the town appropriate $150,000, said some to be raised on the FY '20 tax levy for the purposes printed in the warrant. Since the Medfield State Hospital Design Committee was formed in late August, they've solicited input on the redevelopment opportunity from experienced developers through a formal request for an information process, and then had individual follow-up discussions with these firms. Through the process, the MSHDC determined that further technical analysis of certain aspects of the potential MSH redevelopment would be critical in advancing the effort. Specific technical areas they intend to focus on currently include gaining a better and more accurate understanding of likely infrastructure costs, both on the site and potentially off-site implications on resources like town water and environmental remediation costs associated with existing structures, whether these be addressed through redevelopment or in the alternative through demolition. The master plan was valuable in highlighting these issues, but according to the MSHDC, additional and more concrete information is necessary to better understand these barriers to redevelopment and to determine how we might best mitigate potential costs and/or liabilities to the town. The Board of Selectmen is requesting $150,000 for this article. We are all well aware the time and expense that has already gone into the Medfield State Hospital over the past few years, but the warrant committee believes this article is a sensible appropriation that seems necessary to move forward with finally being able to present a reuse proposal to the town. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Okay. I know we have, Gus Murby wants to make a comment.
During the discussions within the Board of Selectmen about this article, we talked about the fact that there was a somewhat similar article last year that was in the amount of $75,000 that was rejected by the taxpayers. We thought it was important to make a few comments about this before you vote this year. The purpose of this article, as Mike covered in detail, is a combination of supporting the development of the state hospital property as well as continuing the town's monitoring of the state's environmental cleanup. Out of that $150,000, it would be about $50,000 of it would probably be what was required for the environmental monitoring. And for any of you that aren't familiar with the property, there is one piece of property on the state hospital grounds that was not transferred to the town. The reason it wasn't is it's downhill from the old dry cleaning plant, there are serious pollutants in the ground, and the state is still on the hook to clean them up. And so our interest in continuing to monitor that is to make sure they do a credible job of it. The other $100,000 is to support the efforts of the Development Committee to move ahead with the development of the state hospital. Many of you, if not all of you, are aware that the state hospital master planning committee put together a master plan. You've probably read about the various awards that it's received for its quality. More importantly, that master plan was designed, or developed over several years with the best of intentions to capture the desires and the aspirations that the people of Medfield had for the property. At this point in time, we're trying to move ahead with the development of that property, but in order to do that, the Development Committee is going to need some funds to support some additional analyses that support the town getting ready to actually move ahead with this. So last year, the development funds that were requested were voted down. You need to realize that the longer we take to develop this, it costs us about $150,000 to $160,000 a year just to maintain and secure it in its currently undeveloped state. So the decision not to put money in to promote development or to support development actually doesn't help us because we wind up adding time on the other end. So I would ask you to keep that point in mind. The one other point I wanted to cover, and this is still not cast in concrete, but for those of you who are concerned about, is this the point of no return and the rollercoaster is about to go off the top with what we do with the state hospital? Our current plans are to move ahead, and we hope to be able to move ahead with a special town meeting in the fall to ask the taxpayers to approve the zoning changes that would be required to support the redevelopment of the property in accordance with the master plan. The developers, up to this point, have indicated to us that the master plan is reasonable, and there is developer interest in doing that. However, when you have developers come down and sign up on the bottom line for a contract, that's when you find out whether it's really reasonable. So although we think we're on a good track, we recognize that there may be some changes. If that happens, you will have, the taxpayers will have a second opportunity to pass judgment on any changes that may be made. If we were to move ahead with an RFP and want to move ahead with a contract, the taxpayers will have to approve the disposition of that land. So any of you who aren't sure, you know, what you're committing to right now, the commitment right now is to help the Development Committee continue to move ahead with the work it needs to do to be prepared to issue an RFP, and to help the town continue to monitor the environmental cleanup. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on Article 30? Microphone number two first.
Jerry Pott, Seven Curve Street. So first of all, to the state hospital committee, I think they did an incredible job on this and a really hard project. I spent four years of time, and I want to thank them for the effort. A year ago, when the Selectmen were talking about that plan, the hesitation of bringing it forward was the desire to get more financials, and there was a Development Committee and an RFI issued. The recommendation of the state hospital committee and two consultants who had been involved in that was an RFI would just kick it down the road. That the master plan was really two elements, a zoning and guidelines of general design for that property of what the town would or could, to your point, Gus, stomach, you know, what was too much development, what was too much density. My challenge on this is I think we, at this point in time, the town hasn't been presented the plan. It's public, but it hasn't been presented, number one. And number two, the only way we're going to really know if developers are interested is by issuing the RFP. So while I support the effort to put more money towards this, I think we have now delayed another year without having an RFP in the midst. So a town meeting in the fall, this will be the second fall that we've, we're going to have one, and I'm not sure what delaying is doing. The Development Committee, the master plan had a RFP process, had hundreds of pages of documents. The RFI validated that there was interest by developers. Why can't we get it in front of the town to actually discuss and debate it, rather than hiring more consultants, more time to decide whether we issue an RFP? I think the town, at this point, deserves the opportunity to actually vote on the plan. So...
Please.
So I think, Jerry, I mean, the goal of this money is to get us in a position to put something on the table at a special town meeting. And I was a dissenting member of the Board of Selectmen on issuing the RFI, but the purpose of doing that was to get more information. There is still more information we need, because obviously, when this decision is put to the town meeting, we have to compare the costs and the benefits of the proposed master plan and whatever...
in whatever form it is, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen at the town meeting, to the costs and the benefits of continuing to own the property and doing something else. And so I see this money as the Warrant Committee recommends is not just how do we develop this further, because I don't think we needed another year to figure out how to do that, but to get the additional information we need on the costs and the risks and the likelihood of success of the master plan is, even the financial scenario developed by the Hospital Master Planning Committee, it gave itself only a 50/50 chance of being attractive and successful to a developer. And so they also deserve credit for honesty in the assessment they made of their proposal. And so even if people who favored development, if you're going to go forward with a 50/50 plan, we did need to kick the tires more on that. And so to Gus's point as to whether this is letting the roller coaster down the hill, from my perspective, it is not, but I don't think we have everything we need to present the plan tonight, obviously. But I will say that this should be, it ought to be, it has to be presented to the town in the fall. And it's up to us to finish our work, and the Development Committee to finish their work, and I think we do need some of that money. Even if you want to come to that special town meeting, as I believe our next speaker will, and oppose that plan, the people of, in the town need to have the best information we can present to them to understand what the ups and downs are of even adopting the zoning before then moving to what would be a second town meeting to vote on the potential sale or disposition in response to the RFP. So I agree with you, Jerry, that we're not going to know anything until there's an RFP, but at this point, to get from point A to point B, and I think frankly, if we had the $75,000 last year, we might have been able to get there for the originally scheduled special town meeting last fall.
Okay. Microphone number one. I waive the, you don't have to introduce yourself. John, I'll introduce you. This is John, this is John Harney. Oh, hi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the meeting. Whoever thought, when the town of Medfield really got behind the effort to convince the state that we should buy the land that the former state hospital sits on? As you remember, those of you who were here in those few years back, there were 440 units proposed by the Department of Capital Asset Management to go up on the hill, and clearly the people in Medfield thought that was far too many. They feared the consequential costs that would fall on the town after the developer took all of the credits, the affordable housing credits, historic credits, and credits you haven't even heard of yet, but they're all taxpayer credits. And they would put through the costs that would ensue from the development. Where would those go? They'd go on you, the homeowners, which of course pay for most of the taxes in this community, as you can read in your warrant report tonight. I'd like to commend the Board of Selectmen for their preliminary material in their warrant report and the hard work of the Warrant Committee. But this has been a tough year. You're looking at, I believe, Mr., it's the chairman of the, Mike said there on the Warrant Committee, that we're looking at an average 3.2 increase. And indeed, if we hadn't taken all of last year's leftover tax levy, plus $500,000 from free cash, we'd be seeing another override this year. So things are not very good financially in the town of Medfield. You've got major, major costs looming in water and sewer, the school building, and so forth. What am I pleading for up here? I'm pleading for an appreciation of what that hospital property is. Many, many towns around us would love to have 134 acres of town-owned land. That is not to say that we shouldn't do some building up there, probably. But to put up, to follow what's been happening is to follow a course of action that's going to propose maybe 300 units, which will swell to 600 or 700 units before the developer gets done. You can look at Westboro, on a third of the acres that we're talking about here, roughly 90, sort of that, and that has to be taken down with roadways and so forth. But we all, no one is really talking seriously at this point about developing over where we can't, we have 12 acres, we can develop on the other side, not the hillside where the buildings are, but down on the left there. No one wants to develop that land at this point. But the move is to develop and heavily develop the upper campus. Now, you hear talk of the plan, and bless the people who worked on that. I sat into those meetings as a resource member that was never really listened to, but the simple fact is, you're going to end up there with a monumentally expensive project because that's all that can go up there, really. We can't talk commercial up there. Every developer has told us that. The consultants really told us that. And you wonder why we went three consultants, through three consultants, because there was disagreement on the committee itself. Okay? So it's been a long, hard four years of meetings. What I asked for at the beginning was that we have some chance to look at that property and say, give me an alternative that's not going to be heavy, dense development that's going to fall upon the taxpayers. The good lady here was 89. Obviously, I'm still in my 20s, but I have been in town for 54 years at this point, and I've seen developers walk away from jobs, start it and leave it. We saw one of those on Pine Street for a long, long number of years. So think hard and vote for this. I mean, we certainly need to clean up that laundry, or we don't clean it, the state has to clean it up, but we have to monitor the state, and that's where the money from the town goes to make sure the state does its obligation. But we are grateful, I mean, this current committee is a very good committee. They're a no-nonsense committee. They're experienced in the building fields, and they will come through, I'm sure, with consultants who will inform us as to specific costs that we need and should have had, frankly, long ear now. We've spent considerable money. Mr. Murby has said this is a great burden on the town. You know, the town has currently $198,000, $199,000 if you round it up, in money that has come in from, into the revolving fund from uses of that state hospital. So it hasn't been all downhill. We had actually a total of almost $273,000 has come in with no effort on the part of the town to rent that property or to gather money from it. So it's not all gloom and doom. That's an immensely valuable property and should be received as such. Now, what we do with the buildings and what we do about the costs is something else again. We have to figure that out. But I can promise you this, you put up hundreds of units, you're going to get millions in costs in perpetuity, at least as far as any generation in this room is concerned. They'll be here forever. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, John. Microphone number one. Last comment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is probably my 10th appearance here at the town meeting to...
This is Bill Mazzaro.
Yes, I'm sorry. Bill Mazzaro, Evergreen Way.
I just waived his introduction, but I...
Yes.
You should be equally waived, yes.
I'm not offended by...
No, no.
So anyway, I'm a 44-year resident of Medfield. I've lived next to the hospital for 44 years. It's obviously a cause that's been close to my heart. I've stood here the past 10 years advocating for funds so that the town would have environmental consultants to help us pretty much drag the state kicking and screaming to a cleanup up at the hospital. And we managed to do that. We managed to get a mediated settlement agreement for the cleanup in 2014, and the state is continuing to do that cleanup. Now, it's not the major portion of this current warrant article, but there is a fair amount of money still required for us to continue the management of the cleanup there. And I'd just like to give you a little background on what still needs to be done up there. So this year's article's funding is for support for the monitoring of the ongoing non-building environmental issues on state property. The article also provides funding for further advice from consultants on the development of the hospital property and on environmental issues that are related to the buildings. And this would include demolition or any remediation of asbestos or other hazards within, but that is, quite frankly, not my concern. We are very close to finishing the remaining items under the settlement agreement. DCAM is putting forward a revised plan for the remediation of the laundry parts that will bring it to residential soil standards. This effort should be completed by June of 2020. So we are almost there. The other issue that's still open at the hospital is DCAM accepted responsibility for management and maintenance of the overlook area. And I'm sure many of you have been up to the overlook area, you've looked out over the river, you've walked out to the canoe launch and everything else. DCAM has agreed to take perpetual responsibility for monitoring and maintenance of the material that they dragged out of the river and used to construct the overlook. They will be responsible that forever. The problem is, is that we have not yet finalized the language that will bind them to do that. And we need the legal consultant, environmental legal consultants' guidance to finalize that language. And then DCAM will be responsible to keep that area safe forever. So I am very much concerned about at least securing that material, that funding, to finish the job at the state hospital property. Now, we have other issues. I also attended every, every meeting of the Master Plan Development Committee. I have some issues with the plan. There are things that I think need to be finalized or definitized more accurately before we... I'm finishing up.
I want to keep it to the motion as opposed to the plan.
I'm wrapping up.
Okay.
The items that need to be definitized by the new Development Committee, what they're looking for funding for, are things like, how does the town get sewage from the hospital to the town treatment facility? How does the town, as John mentioned, how does, what happens to the 234 units that are, excuse me, 334 units that are proposed if the commercial content does not materialize at the hospital? How many more units do we get? Does the town have the water supply to meet the demand for the new hospital? All of these things need to be investigated before we go out on the street. This is what the balance of the funding will be used for. So I would urge you very much to please pass this article. Thank you.
Hey, a thank you as well for all the time and effort on this initiative. We're going to put this motion to a vote. We're looking at the motion on Article 30 to appropriate $150,000 for the Medfield State Hospital. If there's no other comments, we'll put that to a vote. Simple majority carries. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Michael, why don't you make a quick statement here? Okay? This is Mike Pastore. Ask, make a statement here.
Briefly, for those of you that have gone to town meetings the last several years, you might have noticed that the Warrant Committee is missing the dulcet tones and dizzying intellect of our longtime member, Jack Wolfe, who is soon going to be moving away from our midst a few towns down the road. So we only had him for half the year at the Warrant Committee, but Jack, you're going to be missed by the town, missed by the Warrant Committee, and personally, I've learned more from you than you can possibly know. So thank you for your service, my friend.
Jack Wolfe, thank you.
Mike, in the town of Medfield, thank you very much. It's been a privilege to be here and a privilege to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, next article is Article 20. Article 20 is to appropriate $425,000 to the other post-employment benefits, OPEB trust. This is offered by the Board of Selectmen and the OPEB trustees, found on page 46 of the warrant report. Requires a simple majority. Warrant Committee Member Amanda Hall has a motion and a report.
A move that the town appropriate $425,000, and to meet said appropriation, $134,400 to be raised on the fiscal year '20 tax levy, $48,663 to be transferred from the fiscal year '19 county retirement contribution budget, Account 01-911-2, $16,050 to be transferred from the water enterprise free cash, $25,887 to be transferred from sewer enterprise free cash, and $200,000 to be transferred from general fund free cash to make an annual contribution to the other post-employment benefits or OPEB trust fund. The town is obligated to fund the OPEB trust fund to cover liabilities for post-employee benefits other than pension for the town employees. This article requests that we fund the OPEB trust fund $425,000, which is in keeping with the annual funding amounts of the OPEB policy set forth by the Board of Selectmen and the OPEB committee. The Warrant Committee recommends passage as written.
Are there any questions, comments on Article 15? Excuse me, Article 20. If there aren't, we'll put that motion to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Article 15. Article 15 is an article to authorize the lease of space on the Mount Nebo Water Tower for 10 years. Because it is a lease, it does require a two-thirds vote. And Amanda, you have a motion and report on this as well.
Move that Article 15 be passed as printed in the warrant. Voters at two prior annual town meetings have approved leasing space on the Mount Nebo Water Tower to wireless carriers. Each prior approval was for a 10-year period. The second approval expires this year, so a new 10-year approval is needed. The Director of the DPW and the Board of Water and Sewerage are in favor of this article. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, we'll just put the motion to a vote. It does require a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll deem that it passes by the required two-thirds vote. So at this time, I get the pleasure of being able to thank a lot of people. I mostly want to thank you for coming out tonight. This is what makes this participatory self-democracy that I talk about all the time work. We have one more article, but thank you. I thank everybody up here on the stage, all our visitors, to Medfield TV for putting together the video, to Chris Allen on sound for doing, we have another professional right there, sitting there, that makes me feel comfortable and does a great job on our sound, Conrad, to our public safety officials, thanks to you. Gosh, I think the school department, particularly the technology team and the custodial staff, and to all of the people that work for us at Town Hall. I thank everybody. We're now just going to vote on free cash. It's Article number 32. And so Jeremy, do you have a motion and a report?
I have a positive motion. Move that the town authorize the Board of Assessors to use $500,000 from free cash in the Treasury for the reduction of the tax rate for fiscal year 2020. The Warrant Committee will be heard.
Okay. So we have a positive, is that now a positive motion? Okay, it is a positive motion. Are there any questions on the movement of free cash? The last thing that we do at the end of all of these town meetings. If there are no questions, we'll vote on that transfer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I put a motion to dissolve the Medfield Annual Town Meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, have a great spring. Okay, have a great spring.